We plan on Monday the 13th. Ready to go ahead and start? Good afternoon, everybody. I think everybody's signed the signing sheet. And the next step would be approval of the minutes of February 8th. Everybody had a chance to read or review? If so, I would accept a motion for approval. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. Okay. We'll go on to the Sedgwick County tax sale updates, please.
Excellent. We don't have a huge number of updates this week or this month. We are between tax sales and we have not progressed at this time on some of the additional Exhibit A research. But we do try to keep a running total of where things stand with the county tax sale. And we are seeing a lot of redemptions come through right now, which ultimately is good. That means we're getting the revenue coming back in for those redemption processes. So at this point, as of yesterday's report, there are 183 unredeemed properties in Wichita. Seventeen of those are in the focus area. So that focus area is down by three from when we started monitoring. We do continue to watch just where things progress. At this point in time, it's our understanding that Sedgwick County is planning its next tax sale in late summer or so. And so as we get a little bit closer to that date, we may try to reach out again to some of those property owners to see if there would be any interest in donating properties to the land bank as opposed to going through that tax foreclosure sale process. So that's our update on the tax sale this week here this month. Our next item was the review of parcels at Ninth and Ash. We initially brought this to you, I believe, last month. These are two properties that are city-owned and they are, they were acquired with community development block grants. And we've talked quite a bit about that funding source in recent months, talking about some of the restrictions and opportunities with that funding source. And so part of what made this an interesting property to consider for the land bank is that these properties already have city CDBG funds in. And so they are mandated at this point to have eligible outcomes. So we believe this could potentially be a good fit for the land bank based on already having what we would consider to be the CDBG taint in the property. And so I wanted to just provide a little bit of analysis from some review that staff has done so far. Basically, these are two adjacent properties. This picture shows kind of a long view that covers both parcels. They're at 2046 East Ninth Street North and 1011 North Ash. They are both city-owned. We had, they've been in city surplus for quite some time. They were originally acquired with CDBG for the purpose of cleaning up some, or cleaning up some older structures and problem properties within the northeast neighborhoods. I believe a couple of years ago, a church was demolished on one of the properties, again, using CDBG funds. Now, at this point in time, the city has had an initial inquiry by a developer. We do not know about what the developer has in mind or any plan specifics, but we do know that there has been an expression of some level of interest in these properties. So our hope is always, as we would consider intake of a property, that we would also be able to anticipate that end use. The setup and structure of this land bank requires that we go ahead and think forward rather than just banking the properties and holding them for an indefinite time. Both properties at this point in time are zoned TF3, two-family, and this is a moderate-density multifamily zoning. At this point, I believe that between the two properties, we could put up to five units. However, our real estate team has advised that there would be the potential to do what they call up-zoning to a more dense zoning code. And under that scenario, developers would be permitted to have up to 18 units per acre. So there is a possibility for some moderate to more dense multifamily housing with these properties. We also noted that a block down, and I believe if we look at the map here, it'd be a block over to the east, are the Madison Avenue residences. Those are managed through Mennonite Housing Development. And we did do a poll to see what the unit stats there are. And that includes eight two-bedroom units and 23-bedroom units. And so with that analysis, we wanted to at least open this up for additional conversation to weigh the board's thoughts and feelings on whether this could be a property to continue to research or to look at recommending to council for acquisition.
How difficult would it be to vacate the alleyway?
That is not a question I have a great deal of expertise in.
It depends on whether that alley is being used or not. It is a through alley. And so, I mean, if it's not being used, it'd simply be a matter of going with planning and do all the notifications and run a planning item through.
I mean, it seems like it'd be more usable if it didn't have that alleyway to the north of it.
Utilities, people getting in and out of there.
Yeah, that'd be the key, is whether there's utilities or anything else.
Trash.
The developer you're talking to, excuse me. Any idea what their thoughts are? Are they thinking about single-family duplexes or have you gone that far?
At this point, I believe it's limited to just that there was an inquiry about the property. I don't believe that any plans or details have been proposed at this point in time.
Right now, the city owns both these properties?
Yes.
Any idea what our exposure is? I mean, we have $10,000 for tearing down the previous property.
Acquisition plus demolition, 80, 90? Something like that, if I recall. All right, it was 70-something in the acquisition and then plus the demolition costs. Yeah, the place was full of stuff when we went to demo.
Is it, do we know, is it in floodplain?
I believe the environmental work group did not indicate that it was in the floodplain.
It's not?
And one of, that's another advantage of this particular consideration is that we've already done some of those environmental reviews and other things that we know we would have to do in the course of any CDBG project.
So what is keeping us from negotiating and getting the developer to buy the properties and start building on?
There's not been an offer made on it at this point. Developers only asked about it, but they're also looking at some other properties and we're currently working with them on that item, on the other properties.
If we would sell and transfer that to a developer, do we put any conditions or restrictions or requirements as far as construction must start within a certain period of time and has to be a single-family or multifamily?
Yes, we can put conditions as we so desire on there.
Our standard contract has time requirements. It also has certain requirements against undesirable uses. I mean, if you were, if they were buying it from Real Estate Services instead of the land bank, it would say you're going to start construction by now. By a certain period, this is what you're going to be trying to do. They're also not going to be doing payday loans or halfway houses and so on and so forth.
We could have a development agreement if we were to propose bringing these into the land bank. I do think there would be interest, I'm assuming here, so take that for what it's worth, and purchasing from the land bank as well as purchasing from city real estate by this entity. But we could also have a development agreement that outlines similar.
And I believe with the CDBG funding, we also would have restrictive covenants that would govern that this has to remain within that eligible use for a fairly extensive amount of time. We actually were digging into this a few days ago and found that it's hard to quantify exactly what the timeframe is, but I believe it is six years following the time that that year's grant is closed and then another five years after that. So we're looking at between 10 and 15 years of restrictive covenants with any property.
You could make it, you could do really whatever you want from development. I do covenants at last till, this is just the way it is. And so you could have those things. It also happens they have to start construction in a certain period. You have the option to buy that block back at the price they paid for it. Add whatever covenants.
And giving yourself flexibility on what that period is, depending on what it is they're trying to do. You know, if they come back and say they're going to try and do a loan to housing tax credit competitive, well, we know that application goes in in January. Nothing's happened until June of the following year. Knowing what it is that they're trying to do, rather than being very prescriptive and saying that anytime someone purchases a property through the land bank, they have to start three months. That might not be realistic, right? We want to be able to have those flexibilities. Then we need to hold them to whatever the agreed time frame.
I'm sorry, I came a little late. Is this property now, the city owns this? So is this a property that's eligible to be given to the land bank? And the land bank can decide what we want to do with it at that point?
We have looked at some city surplus properties to go ahead and begin sending them to the land bank, in part because it would allow us to have processes. We have yet to take a property into the land bank and so we recognize that there will be learning and there will be building as we go and as we begin to do that. So the advantage, we don't want to just transfer city surplus properties from one place to another within the city organization as a long-term structure, but the advantage to pilot it easily with one of those properties would be that learning opportunity.
I guess my only concern is that we transferred into the land bank, yet we don't have any understanding with the developer. So we just set off for a period of time, which we don't have the money to pay for maintenance or anything else of it. So do we want to negotiate a deal before we even have it in our possession? Or how do, what do you, what's your thoughts on that?
No, I think when it comes down to it, we do know that most properties that come into the land bank, there will be a holding period. There will be some work to go ahead and make sure that title is clean, this transfer time lapse. So we know that we have some cost one way or the other. I think that's probably a policy direction this board could help to set, whether, whether we want to go so tightly that we do try to pre-negotiate end opportunities before taking properties in, or whether we want to be a little bit more open after verifying that we think that property will have an eligible end use.
I'd like to also add, keep in mind that these properties are unique city real estate properties and that they already have a community development block grant, CDBG taint, if you will. So how long have you guys had these?
This one, we've had at least since I've been here and that's 18 years.
Well, it took Sally coming on board and figuring out how the rules work for us to be able to tear it down. So it's been vacant, it's been vacant land for a couple of years.
I don't think we have work about title issues then.
Taking that down since I've been here, I'm living free.
I didn't know, but it took you being here to figure out how to get it taken down.
I would think there should be, I would issue that before. So this property is ready to go and I guess what I would recommend is to have to say, what do we want there? Pursue that first. It's probably most likely going to be a Mennonite housing type project. Pursue it that way. Instead of having, let somebody come up with what we idea. I think we should have what we want, the rest of the community, and try to find that first. See what's next on that. It'd be a great piece to take into the bank as our first piece.
I don't disagree with you. I think it's a kind of a good pilot project to work out. And I don't think we'd have any trouble. We haven't reached out to our community development organizations to say, hey, here's a property. But it may be our opportunity to really look at density a little bit, right? I could easily put three houses. But is that really, you know, maybe we want three duplexes?
And I think too, that with the affordable housing need, it's a great, expanding that modification zoning to extend it to the 18 unit, I think would be most toward our goals.
So what, so what is the, once we proceed your protocol, we put it in the land bank, then where is the value of the price? Who's determining that? Where's that amount come from?
Once again, I would, at that point, if it came through the land bank, I would be reaching out to, if affordable housing is what we think is most appropriate there, reaching out to our partners that do affordable housing. See what type of projects they come back with. It would be, you know, they would be proposing in essence to the board trustees and you could make your recommendation. Remember, your recommendations always turn around and go back to the council. We'll have to do that. If you want to bring this into the land bank and make a motion today to try and work that direction, we still have to go to the council to bring it in. And then we would be putting it out to developers.
How long do you think that's all going to take to do, go in, go out?
Well, if you make a motion today, as soon as we can probably get it in a council agenda is what, the second week of April, probably? First week of April, maybe?
Is there any reason why we wouldn't go ahead and start talking to developers about?
I don't, it's a win-win because whether the land bank sells it or the city sells it, we want to act on that parcel. Even if it didn't come through the land bank to test our processes.
I agree with Gary and I think he needs to talk to them. Let's get the process going and it makes sense to run this through the land bank so we get one transaction. See how this feels, give it a chance to work. Get you together and say, let's get it processed and have a goal to have something going up in a hundred and twenty days.
And we have had preliminary, very early conversations already, so we can continue those.
I make a motion that we request that the city transfer this property to the land bank. That's my first motion. I have somebody that would second that motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. My second motion is that we contact developers and we get some of their ideas of what they would do with this. Our goal would be to have as dense of population or improvements to the property as what would reasonably be expected at that location on that property. And it'd be really nice to have a couple of different RFPs as far as just, you know, I'd say 40,000-foot level, you know? So that we can start thinking about what are the developers thinking from affordable housing? What would be appropriate for this location? So I make a motion that we go ahead and proceed on that. I get, that is a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. Great.
Thank you. That one's been a long time in coming. Thank you all for your work to get to that point.
Do you have any other properties that you're looking at similar that we?
At this time, we do not. We do continue to maintain a watch on different city surplus property options, but there are no active properties under consideration at this point beyond this one. So with that though, we are continuing to look into research, trying to identify potential properties in the neighborhoods within the target area. And so last meeting, this board had tasked staff with looking forward into some of these areas where we have aligned where there are vacant lots and where there are active developmental activities through partners that use the home ownership program and other city programs. And so you'll see on the left is an MAPD-produced map that shows vacant properties. Blue, I believe, are just vacant. Red, I believe, the coding indicated that there is some activity level going on or anticipated. And then on the right side, those green dots indicate a development that has been or is underway through one of our developer partners. And so this board tasked us with really focusing in on that poplar-green and Estelle area between 15th and 16th and also on this corridor between 12th and 13th. At this time, our staff has completed the research on the first assignment here. And I believe we've reviewed 23 different parcels within here looking for things such as developability, whether they may be owned by the adjacent property owner and things like that. I know that there have been things identified such as this slipper right here, probably not developable. And so we're trying to get into the community and really take a visual look at what properties are, what their conditions are, as well as researching the appraisers' side and trying to understand which ones might present themselves as viable options to reach out on. And so I wanted to let Roger share a little bit more because he was out doing the legwork in the community.
Yeah. Lance and I took photographs and we developed the evaluation form of the 23 vacant units. There are four vacant units that adjacent owners own. They either have junk cars on them, just a vacant lot, a lot of debris, some poor housing. Six of them are developer-owned now. Some out-of-state owners. Lafayette owns one. Mennonite, I believe, owns one. Rock the Block has a new construction on one of the lots. I think it was on, on Estelle.
In some of that discrepancy, we do recognize that our maps are from two different time periods. The one on the left is February of '22 and the one on the right is current. So we're celebrating that there has been progress since that one on the left was first developed.
Four different construction projects going on in that block. Is that the green ones?
Yes.
Any idea what ones were at the block? What's the other three? Any idea?
Mennonite, you said.
Mennonite housing has one.
The others, new construction or remodels or do we know?
They're all new construction, I think.
Yeah.
And Lance, how far back did that mapping go when you were getting unit listings from developer partners?
Yeah, that's far back.
So 2018 through today on those. And did that include proposed projects?
That included closed projects in progress and owned lots. So that they were projecting but did not get on the lot or was not.
So given this information, what type of additional information would you like for us to bring to the next meeting with respect to the next slide? So the long rectangular one on the next slide, was this a good level of review? Is there additional things you'd like to know? There are things, additional information that you'd like to know about the first meeting? Just to give us a point of reference for what you would like to see at the next meeting.
I mean, my question would be, is the vacant lots in there, are they just vacant lots? And, you know?
Debris.
Own debris. Ownership, adjacent, how many are not adjacent?
Well, there's, we get 23, four are adjacent, so the remainder are not.
You got 19 that's not. And are those, is there any ownership similarities between them? Does one person own four, five of them or is it all? You know, because I know what I've also heard is there's a lot of state issues and probate court, you know, getting properties transferred, probate. Do we think there's some of those issues in there? Or how do we, how do we get those where they're developable lots opposed to just vacant lots?
That is highly likely that there are on some of these where there used to be units and those have been lost in one way or another. It's highly likely that they also come with very complex title situations.
I guess I'd just like to understand more, you talked about having vacant or abandoned automobiles and everything. Their code, what should be going on in some of those neighborhoods that is not, that is detrimental to the neighborhoods, that maybe we need to find out. I mean, is that something we ought to do or we shouldn't do? I mean, if it's hurting the neighborhood, you ought to do it.
I'm curious, you mentioned that several of them are, the vacant lot is owned by an adjacent property. Is that an owner-occupied property or is that? In every case?
I also reached out to Planning a couple of months ago now to get some additional context on what they did in developing the map on the left. And I wasn't involved in soliciting that from Planning. They did the analysis and they provided it to us in our administration of the land bank. And they noted that some of these properties or parcels are being taken care of by the person who lives next to it, but they might not necessarily in every instance be the owner. So that, I don't know if that's a helpful thing to add to this discussion, but some of those side lots might not, might be being taken care of by the person who lives next to them, but is not necessarily owned by that person.
Just very nice of the person to do it. But, you know, if, I mean, where I grew up, I mowed three lots two doors down from us because that was the only way it ever got mowed.
Exactly.
My dad said, "Go mow that," and that's what we did. So, you know, I mean, I guess I understand if I want to keep my neighborhood nice, I'd be doing it. But I also, if we've got abandoned vehicles and stuff like that, maybe we get the neighborhood to start thinking about how do we overall clean it up? So, but I think this is good. I'd like to peel the onion back a little farther if I had my way and understand a little more about ownership and is there opportunities for us to help some of these people get through probate or to find out where there's opportunities for them to either sell the properties or get probate in that area?
Yeah, our funding source wouldn't let us do public service while providing us. It's simply we're at, we've hit the cap of what we can spend if we're public services. So we'd have to identify a different funding source if the city wants to assist people.
That's a rabbit trail we need to maybe run. Say, if we don't have budget, take care of it. We ought to be requesting, what kind of budget would you need?
I think we could have further conversations with NABCD. I remember a few months ago, they came on to the city's podcast, like Redhead and Beard and Beauty, I think it's called, where they sit down with our communications manager and, actually, two of our communications managers. I sat down with Kay Lynn and we can send that link out if you're interested in watching. It's actually pretty interesting to learn more about the condemnation process, but she talks a lot about. There is a pretty ever-present need in our community for, it would be nice if they could also have access to a pot of funds to help people get through probate because the resources just aren't there in a lot of those instances. So we are going to be embarking on our planning process here starting in July for our next five-year planning period. We're planning to hire a consultant to help us do the engagement and data analysis to produce our very robust community needs assessment that's required as a part of that process. And so if that's something that comes out as a, you know, loud and clear as a need, then we could propose to the city council to set aside funds, aside funds within our public services area of CDBG budget for that very purpose. It would mean changing the way in which we program public services for a very long time. So I don't know how palatable that would be, but that is something that we could.
You're competing with domestic violence, shelter services and youth crime prevention. And I'm just saying, in order for us to fund that, we have to cut one of those. That's where she's getting in, how palatable is that going to be? That's where she's getting in, how palatable is that going to be?
We also fund the city neighborhood resource centers. So, you know, staff cost and data center charges associated with providing those services within three neighborhood city halls on an area-wide benefit because those neighborhood city halls are in low-to-moderating neighborhoods, CDPG-eligible neighborhoods. So that would be another thing that factors within that. So typically, CDPG funds, you can't spend more than 15% of your CDPG grant each on a program year basis for public services. However, we are actually grandfathered in at just over $1.1 million, which is way over the 15%. So we always almost max it out every single year. So just something to be mindful of.
This is something that goes to the Affordable Housing Fund Board that they could probably allocate some of the funds for this to kind of
Would take a program change, but.
Yeah, it would take a, yeah, it would take a pretty substantial programmatic adjustment to the way in which those ARPA funds are being proposed to use now to to increase the supply of affordable housing as well as improve the housing stock that we currently have through home repair programming. Is it impossible? No. But it would be substantially different than what we're proposing to do with those funds at this period of time. Now, that is a dynamic conversation that we are having with respect to that fund currently. We do know we have to take a revision to the program plan that was approved April 12th of last year, given additional treasury regulations that we've been significantly aware of.
Yes, instead of looking at, maybe ought to have WSU do, if you could have them do a study for you that says, okay, if we take these lots, we spent this amount of money. I don't know what the cost is to get these things where we can actually sell them. If we can actually build a house on it, the revenue that that reduces. I think at the end of the day, when we got lots sitting for eight years, we could have a house on it 24 months, the revenue, it would be a positive cash flow if you look at it. You tend to look at it as an expense, but there's also the income side of it. I think once you start doing those kinds of things, it's not just a matter of just taking from the budget. You're going to put more money back in. Probably might be able to get these things funded easier. At that data, say, yes, it's going to cost us some, but in the days positive, does that make sense? And I think WSU, their real estate, that would be something that
It'll target us.
I like your thinking.
Maybe you can set up a meeting for us, Mark.
I was gonna say, I did one with our EcoDevo and just took a $10,000 lot that was able to sell for $500. And they put $150,000 on it hypothetically, taxes, and it was within a 10-year ROI of recovering at $10,000. So, you know, that's to your point. You look at it like, well, we lost $9,500 on it. But because of what they did within the taxes that were generated from it, you know, within a 10-year ROI is not too bad. That scenario, so that's a mini example of what you were talking.
And a $150,000 house is affordable.
Right.
I've also seen similar research coming out of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County and BCK, where they talk about not only the impact of that tax revenue from that house, but also the impact of not having the vacant and overgrown lots and the drain on property value that that is. And so really, everything we're doing here is a long game toward lifting the whole neighborhood.
It's not an expense, it's investment, I guess, where I'm headed.
I don't have investment pots of funds, though.
You would if you took that approach.
But that also gets into maybe the annual report to council. I mean, if they continue to fund us the way they have in the past, which is basically zero, the results they're going to get is zero. If
And the neighborhood gets worse.
And the neighborhood gets worse. We don't clean up these lots, we don't clean up the vacated automobiles, then their tax base doesn't increase and just the whole neighborhood continues to decline. And I think that's why we're here. So, you know, some of the stuff we've talked about is in line with, I think, what we're supposed to be doing. But there needs to be some funding somewhere to help support some of it. Or some funds that could be invested where we could get a return for our community in more ways than one.
A question that may be tangential, and if it's not germane to this topic, I can, I could hear that, receive it and get an answer at some other point. But I'm wondering, what neighborhood association that is, what percent, if there are 23 properties in there, is that 10% of the homes in that neighborhood association? Is that? Particularly when we start talking about density and more of that. I'm just really curious about what percent of people are located in whatever that neighborhood association is that's represented within those.
Is there a neighborhood association?
I can tell you, I'm pulling it up right now. We did that research as part of our Affordable Housing Fund engagement. I believe it's northeast, no, it's not, no, it's not northeast. I believe it's northeast central, but I could, that could be wrong.
Correct.
Central. I want to say the dividing line, though, is 17, so it's also very close to another one. That's important.
I think that's a great point. I think certainly we could put the Neighborhood Association overlays on these maps to have a more defined structure of what we're looking at as we're looking at each area.
Oh, I think that would be helpful. And I'm wondering, I know we've talked a little bit about engagement. As we start having conversations about what we'd like to think or what we think might happen, what is the level of engagement within those boxes? How much bigger does that area get through a neighborhood association or just things that are top of mind?
So it looks like the, it is northeast central and it looks like their, their meetings actually just started back up in the month of March. It looks like they meet on the first Monday of every month, starting in March, going all the way through December. So I think we should try and go to the Neighborhood Association meeting in April. And then hopefully, I think that should take place before, yep, that should take place before our next meeting, as long as it's happening as as scheduled, and we can have an update for you on that.
I think that would be really interesting.
Can we ask questions like, what would they like to see in their neighborhood?
How supportive would they be of, you know, engagement and maybe even enforcement? Because that's a, that's a scary, you talked a little bit about, should we be the ones, you know, triggering enforcement? I've been in neighborhoods who would embrace that, and I've been in neighborhoods where they're like, yeah, no, don't bring them here.
And so I think we should also plan to attend the A. Price Woodard and Murdoch. They meet together, actually. So that's going to actually overline, overlay with the parcel we just talked about. And that one is actually on the third Thursday of every month. And so hopefully, as long as that takes place, we should be able to have an update for you.
Okay, so how do we, how do we attend meetings like that without being in violation of something?
Our staff just to be, I think we're members.
Okay.
So we'll confirm with the neighborhood associations. Go ahead, Sarah.
I was gonna say, we could do an RSVP just to confirm which board members might plan to attend and to confirm that we wouldn't have an open meetings violation.
And then we'll confirm with the neighborhood associations to make sure the meetings are taking place as scheduled and then push that information out to you ahead of the meeting. Looks like Murdoch might be a quick turnaround, but that would actually be the 16th, so a week from tomorrow. Yeah, if it's taking place.
I think that's something we need to do. Be interesting to hear from the homeowner association, what their expectations are of the land bank and how do we work together to?
We may have contacts and know people who own some of those lots, too.
Do that. So we kind of touched on titles earlier and wanted to come back around. And just kind of, for those of you who are in real estate, this may already be knowledge you have, but we did want to formally share a little bit about what we anticipate encountering with titles as we proceed with the land project. And so I will say that Roger took the first go on this research and Jeff has helped us round it out. And so any questions or thoughts, feedback, we can keep on adding to it. So typically, within Kansas real estate, titles and deeds, these are common situations within titles and deeds. We can have joint tenancy, which includes a right of survivorship, tenancy in common, undivided ownership interest, sole ownership, tenant by entirety and community property, which is not allowed in Kansas, actually. That was a notation of something that would be more common elsewhere. So in terms of types of deeds, a general warranty deed is going to be a protection for the buyer. And so it's going to be a clear title or we may need to pursue some different processes to get that clear title. A special or limited deed is going to only warrant no title defects during that current ownership period. A quitclaim deed, there are no warranties for liens or claims. We see these quite a bit within some of the real properties that we work with in the city. And so impediments, and this is where it gets interesting because this is where our staff piloting processes, every property that we take in, probably for the next 12 to 24 months, we will find new things that we get to work through, would be my guess. And so we can have mortgages or other liens, we can reach out and contact companies for that release. We can discover that maybe a property that we're interested in is owner or is occupied. I believe there were some tax sale properties in last year's Sedgwick County foreclosure sale where we had interest in the property, felt like it was viable, but we're not going to go into the business of evicting people. Unpaid taxes can incur a lien on the property. I believe that we are positioned so that we can help clear liens for property taxes. I'm not sure on the status with unpaid federal. Probate or bankruptcy, we can, there may be some complexities if we are interested in a property that has one of those situations. Again, liens can be placed for court judgment fees or fines. We can have mechanics liens where if a contractor is not compensated, they file a lien. I think we had a medical lien situation with another one of the tax foreclosure sale properties. Encroachments with boundary disputes, easement concerns or considerations. And I think one of the things that we anticipate getting into is when there is a situation where a family has inherited and inherited, and so we're down to 32nd and 64th ownerships, where we have to go in and track down all of the owners and work to clear that title. And so these are things we know are coming and we're trying to get ahead to understand what we may be dealing with.
Can you, Sarah, can you go back for the, for the unbaptized here? Unknown easement. Does that, who doesn't know?
My guess would be, and I'm looking to the experts, that this would be if there was an easement that somehow was not afforded.
Let me ask an even more basic question. What's an easement?
So that would be, for example, if a utility runs across your property or if there is an area that is needed for public infrastructure.
That's right.
That would be designated.
It would be an access.
Okay, that's helpful.
Sure, sure. Jeff, what else would you have on?
Like you said, it's an unreported easement. There could be an easement with all by prescription, meaning somebody's used it for long enough that they may have obtained a right to the land. And that's not the ownership of the land, but the use of the land that's on top of that, if you will. But we can see this situation where somebody's driven across somebody's property for years, over 15 years, and they may have claimed they've got an easement to, you know, to do that. So, like I said, in addition to looking at title, there's a physical observation of property that's important, too.
Helpful. Thank you.
Great questions, and I'm learning right along with everybody. And so title reports, the city, I think we mentioned this last month as well. The city does have a contract with Security First Title for a contract rate to to receive title ownership and encumbrance reports. There is a fee involved in getting those, and so we don't want to incur fees until we're very serious about a potential property. That report would include items listed here, last to owner of record, legal description, liens and mortgages. And then that helps us to start to know, verify a little more deeply whether we feel like we can remedy the situations with the property. This is not an insured document. Title insurance is sold separately. And I believe that's typically based on the formula of that contract. And so mostly, we wanted to give the flyover view here of what's ahead and the things that staff is anticipating getting to work through as we start to bring them in. Any other questions on this? See, and speaking of kind of flyover level reports, we do have our annual report to council coming up soon. That is due by April 15th, and I believe we're slated for April 4th, is what we're targeting. So this year, we know that we, we're not going to have any acquisitions or dispositions to report. And so a lot of what we're looking at taking to council is really talking about where we are and what we've learned. We'll be able to celebrate achievements, including getting the project staffed up. That was not a small endeavor with the 2022 staffing environment. Starting to monitor the tax sale. And really, I think what this board has done fabulously is better defining the project scope and our target areas. And so we'll be able to take that to council and have a much more defined, what is it that we're looking at? What are we trying to do? We have really learned quite a bit about developing a methodical and targeted approach in light of the learning that we've all done together. We have a better understanding now of our structure and our funding constraints as we've all learned more about what can and can't be done with Community Development Block Grant. And that is our primary funding source for this project, which is different from most land banks. And so we want to make council aware of what it is that we are trying to build here and under what kind of constraints. We do want to talk about the different property acquisitions that have been considered, and I wanted to review those because it's actually a fairly impressive list. We had looked at evaluation and outreach for three properties that were in the December 2022 tax foreclosure sale. As it turned out, those outreach efforts did not result in property acquisition, but we had some learning opportunities through that. We evaluated and considered a city surplus property near Interstate 235 where there was active developer interest. That was not received into the Wichita Land Bank due to environmental remediations required for a CDPG project that would have driven up the development cost in the end. Similarly, we evaluated and considered several other city surplus properties along 13th Street. Staff eventually recommended not pursuing those properties as well, again, because of CDPG-related challenges with environmental remediation. I believe specifically there, there were sound issues and noise levels. I think there may have also been a plume issue. And we knew that the cost to try to address those issues was probably going to exceed what was reasonable for most developers, especially then when they would turn around and need to be affordable housing units. And so they would be rent restricted on the other side. We also evaluated and declined to receive a property on South Hiram. It was offered as a potential donation with known title challenges. We considered that property and said, ultimately, we weren't sure if its specs were developable. And it was, we weren't sure if we could get an eligible outcome. And it also was outside of our target area. And not that we can't consider properties outside of our target area, but this one was not a viable appearing project. And so additionally, we've done outreach to promote the land bank as an option to several properties in the upcoming tax sale. And so we have achieved quite a bit and again, really defined that scope. So additionally, I want to talk about just CDB funding structure learning. We talked more about that last month and kind of, I'd like to give the council an overview of what we can and can't do with that, within that funding structure. And I'd like to also share that our meetings with Sedgwick County have really driven home the point that this land bank will not operate like the Unified Government in Wyandotte County or like the Pittsburgh Crawford County arrangement. Sedgwick County is not reading the statutes the same way we are. Some of their philosophies. Some of their philosophic considerations in operating their tax sale, it doesn't work with what we're trying to do. And we do want to clarify that that has been a limitation. It may ultimately not be moved, except with legislative consideration. So going from there, actually, I'll stop right there before we get into legislative considerations. And I would take any feedback or input or ideas for other things that should be included in that report.
I'd like to see the report before we present it. I think it's something we need to review.
I'm glad to do that.
Get more input.
Sarah, I know you're going to talk about legislative considerations in a minute, but is the, is the intent of the report, what's my real question? Going down a rabbit hole. Is it appropriate to utilize the report to ask whether or not those folks from the council are willing to do some of the bidding with the county to help build that relationship? It seems staff has been working on it really hard, and yet we haven't been able to make progress. So is that a part of the goal or no?
It would be, it doesn't necessarily have to be. And so I think staff might want to have a conversation with the manager's office to determine whether those are appropriate to combine or to take as separate topics. The report could be, certainly be a standalone without legislative considerations. And if we did that, then we could come back later with a more fleshed out legislative possibility. But I think that would be something that we would certainly want to vet out comfort level.
I think the report ought to have recommendations or requests. And I think it should include funding possibly, code enforcement, should look at legislative considerations, i.e. the tax foreclosure sale definitions of that. I also think it needs to look at the state of Kansas passed a very, very good rural housing initiative last year. I think it needs to include urban areas. So I think that's part of the legislative considerations, how do we?
That passed the Senate about 10 days ago, the state senate, that changed. Yeah.
Passed the Senate, it's now good to the House. But we need to say that it's something we want not, so.
Well, and that was actually taken as part of the city's legislative agenda, the push for that, and so, you know.
I apologize, I wouldn't wear that it got passed the senate.
I'm sorry?
I didn't know it got passed the senate, so. But I mean, I think those are bullet points that we need to have in there, so just thought.
Get more, a little bit broader in scope to include some of those legislative iterations, not just state legislative, but also how can we work with the county or encourage the elected, our elected officials to have, continue those conversations. And then I would also, we'll definitely provide you a copy of that report. It will go on April 4th, and so we can have a copy of that for you to review by March 17th. So if you guys could review that and provide any feedback by March 22nd, then we'll have what we need to be able to get it through the process here. And then if you guys could come and speak during the meeting, I think that could go a long way as well. Or I would encourage you to, to consider that.
So on legislative considerations, staff had done some initial brainstorming on potential ways to kind of take this forward. We, we don't want to break relationships with Sedgwick County. We really want to get to where we are working the legislation toward a reconciliation so that we can make what we're trying to make work. Similarly, we don't want to break anyone else's landbanks that are working correctly. So we do have some sensitivities and considerations in anything we do to make sure that we are fixing and advancing, but not doing damage in the process. So we would potentially request that our law office go ahead and begin to convene some expertise to look at the tax sale statutes and the land bank statutes. That's an area where we're feeling like the statutes just aren't in full alignment. And so to look at some language opportunities to bring those into better alignment, with the goal being to try to come up with a position that would allow the Wichita Land Bank to better participate in tax sale. We would also like to look back and identify who was the original sponsor of the bank legislation. Try to dig into that history, see if those people are still in the legislature and reach out. Additionally, find out their communities, which communities are really feeling like they're able to utilize, and are there any other communities that are stymied similar to what we are with the way that things currently stand? I believe we would want to include this in the city's policy statements and some other arenas that we could pursue would be the League of Kansas Municipalities policy statement. We may want to look at the Kansas Association of Counties just because it's better to have agreements when possible rather than getting to that level and finding out that we are fundamentally misaligned. We might look at pursuing, I'm sorry, missed my bullet point. And then again, discussing legislative opportunities with other landbanks, both those that have good alignments to find out where we could maybe tweak without harming, and also those that may be having a struggle to get going. And we might also look at other professional organizations that might have aligned interests, whether that could be builders, realtors, title companies, or anybody else. And so within that, we are, once again, very open to additional ideas. And we will want to, if we pursue that direction, to build out a more formal working strategy and make assignments within.
Are we aware of, like, is Wyandotte, they have a good land bank that's operating up there? Is that someplace that we could go visit or?
They have, so they have a unique advantage in that they're a unique government. And so those initiatives are aligned and joint. I'm trying to remember, I think they have like four, more than 4,000 properties in their land bank. So it may actually be bigger than what we would be comfortable really managing to manage well. But what, something we've noted there and also in Pittsburgh and Crawford County is that properties are set at the delinquent taxes and interest owed. And so there are, we, we understand that there are agreements in place so that if a property that would meet those land bank criteria doesn't sell on tax sale for that minimum price point, that it would transfer to the land bank for holding an eventual disposition and redevelopment. Wyandotte County has some really good research. I've dug into their website a little bit, and it would be an amazing place to get to visit and see what they do and how they do it.
Send me a contact with Wyandotte County, would you?
I will say, so far, our connection with them has been limited to us looking at the website. I believe Jeff may have had some conversation at an earlier point, but we have not yet forged that direct conversational relationship.
I just called their website, there's a number on the website, and I ended up speaking to their council on some stuff. But I didn't get into, like, they've got something like, like eight employees, land bank, something like that. So it's quite the organization, it's the first one for Kansas. And they've had up to 2,000 properties in their land bank before they kind of got into, when flipping properties was really hot. Soon they could be doing flipping sales, and then when that kind of stalled, they got stuck with a whole bunch of properties, they can't do anything. That's why they had to turn into.
Want to be up there, I just thought it might be interesting to go.
It's been very, it's been helpful when I've talked to them and who I've talked to. So they're really be willing to, you know, accommodate.
Put an hour together.
In terms of timeline, I believe when I was looking at their information, they've actually been in existence around 20 years, and they are just now seeing some of the types of accomplishments that we do. So this really is a long endgame. But they're trying to work to have a strong side lot disposition program for lots that are not developable. They are trying to build out opportunities for developers to kind of be at the ready for when they acquire a property with a unit on it, to be able to rebuild that unit and get it back into use. So there was a lot that was very interesting and very goal worthy that we saw there. Any other business today?
I would encourage you to attend our housing conference. It will be April 19th, and then we're also offering their housing training on April 20th. So we have another land bank meeting, so we'll have some slides at the next meeting pertaining to that. But we do, I believe we're hoping that registration's going to be open today. If not today, then likely tomorrow. And we're going to have the city's social media sharing that on their pages, but we can also email it out to you.
Email that, and also email the slides today, each one, please.
We always save the slides on the website as well, but we'll make sure to email them, too.
Any other items for discussion? No, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor say aye. All the same side. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
There were like four dates, the council meeting, the training.
April 19th, housing conference.